Obviously, we've got to discuss funding. The other is Albizia control, which, as you may be aware, we're having a meeting next week with some representatives from the county, Brian Schatz's office from the feds, myself from the state, and Helco. And we're hoping to establish a long-range program of working to control Albizia. And we're going to be asking each of those agencies, the county being one, of course, to kick in some serious money on an annual basis so that we can address the Albizia issue proactively. As I'm sure you know, Albizia was the cause of eighty or ninety percent of the damage from Isel. And now we're facing, you know, possibly other storms, and certainly there'll be others in the future. Money that we invest in removing Albizia from the roadways, from the power lines, from people's homes will be money well-spent in terms of disaster preparedness, and we need the county to be a partner along with the state, Helco, and the feds. In terms of what bills I might be proposing that I would like to ask for support on, let me think about that a bit and transfer it to someone else.
Okay. Okay, let's go with Representative Kriegen.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me again, and glad to be here. Okay, in terms of the top priorities for capital improvements for projects on the Waimea, since I'm in, speaking from Oceanview, number one priority for me is to get funding to complete a second well for Oceanview. We received planning money for that, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, and once that well is fitted, then hopefully we'll be getting the funds to complete that well. Now whether that'll be this session or the session after that, I'm not sure. That is a top priority for me. A second priority would be Palamanui, you know, getting the building for a two-year college and then a four-year college, and keeping that on track as much as possible. We don't want any gaps in the funding for that project, and we want to keep it as fully funded as we possibly can. A third very high priority for me is the, a new hospital for West Hawaii, and I think this session, we may have some progress on setting up a funding mechanism for that, at least I hope so. The next one would be finishing the funding for the courthouse, and of course, I think you all realize, we did get the money for the pharmacy building for UH Hilo, and that money has been released. So I don't think they need any more money at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Any bills that you might be proposing for the state?
Well, yeah, I have a number of bills. I haven't, you know, I don't have a list with me today. I think that, you know, sort of getting to that second part about communicating, I think that, you know, once the election's over, I think we need to have some type of communication process for getting ideas from you guys and getting our ideas to use, to see, get some discussion going before we start writing the bills up for this coming session. So I think it's very important, I think what you're asking for is very important, getting us kind of on the same page in terms of what needs to be done and what, you know, you want done, what we want done. And I think, of course, Senator Ruderman brought up the ongoing disaster in Puna, and, you know, there are probably some things we'll be doing at the state level that you'll ask us to do, and we'll try and help you out with that as much as possible. Thank you.
Okay, Representative Nakashima.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think that, you know, after our meeting a couple months ago, you know, we suggested that, you know, we have this follow-up discussion to talk about the capital improvement projects. And so I'm glad that you're here today. I'd like to thank Chair Onishi and the members of the council for inviting us back and to have this discussion. I think that, you know, as I look forward, last year when we received the resolution from the council, you know, there was a item in District One that I did include in my capital improvement project request. I think that, you know, as we move forward, you're developing the, or highlighting the state interest in whatever capital improvement project you recommend is kind of going to be key in terms of trying, in getting legislative support for putting state monies into joint capital improvement projects. You know, I've been very fortunate that Councilwoman Poindexter and myself, you know, have been able to work together on a number of projects where there is a joint state and county interest in the projects that we are moving forward. And so I think that's kind of the formula that I can recommend to everyone else, that, you know, that's kind of a no-brainer, that's an easy project to get behind and support. And in other ways, you know, I am looking at the, kind of the bigger situation as well. There is a lot of concerns with the things happening in the Puna district, and, you know, if there is a need for relocation of people, you know, what kinds of things might we be able to put in place legislatively to give the governor and state agencies the appropriate authority to assist in the relocation or temporary housing perhaps of those individuals that are displaced, individuals and businesses that are displaced by natural disasters. And as we look at the possibility of another hurricane heading our way in the next week, it becomes very poignant that, you know, we need to look at these things and try and put the things in place now, because, you know, once the disaster happens, it's kind of too late to start thinking about what the next step should be. So I think, you know, those kind of things that we look at planning ahead, I think is kind of key, and, you know, I look forward to continuing the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Loewen.
Thank you, and thanks for inviting us here today. I'm sorry I missed the first meeting, and I didn't realize I hadn't RSVP'd, but I'm happy to be here. So for next session, my top priority is going to be the additional funding needed for the Kona courthouse. Following that, I think, planning, funds for planning for Phase Two of Palamanui, so that we can start thinking about what the next steps are with that. Also, as Representative Kriegen mentioned, Kona Hospital, if we had funding for a new hospital, that would be amazing, but for the time being, I think they're also looking at needing potentially funds for a helipad and some other improvements that'll sort of be stopgap for their facility that they have now. And of course, there's always, you know, working on CIP for, see if Nellha has any requests. I haven't sat down and talked to them yet. And for schools. For legislation, one of the things I'm going to be looking at is to sort of help address this issue we've had with wastewater and the potential DOH rules. So even if those rules don't go through, we're going to draft legislation that would stop construction or permitting of any new cesspools in the state, number one. Number two, if it does go through, at least for some residents, it would be a financial burden, so I'm looking at tax credit and also kind of looking into what funds might be available at the state level to help do low-interest loans, and maybe there's some at the county as well, so it's something we could try to work together on. And on that issue too, I think if there's opportunities for the state and county to work together to find funds to help expand the infrastructure for wastewater in the county, that would also help address this issue moving forward, so a lot of residents will be affected. And there's, you know, other, of course, we're always happy to have your support on bills that we're introducing at the legislature, and likewise, if there's things at the county that I can be supportive in some way, I'm always happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council members, who would like to start first?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Iligan.
Thank you. I have a question for Representative Loewen and also for Representative Kriegen.
Same question?
My question is, have you talked to Senator Josh Green regarding the courthouse, the Kona Hospital, and also the Kahala?
Palamanui.
I'm terrible with Hawaiian names. Palamanui?
Um...
Palamanui.
And so, is the question, have we talked to him about it, or is it, or where is his, because I can't speak for him, but I know that courthouse is important to him as well, obviously the hospital and Palamanui. So, you know, we have to work together, House and Senate, to try to get those funds, and I'm pretty sure he's on board, but you'll have to ask him.
Okay, I was just wondering if you guys had a meeting, and you got, and he showed his support in that meeting, so I'm guessing he has. Okay, that was my question too, to Representative Kriegen, if that was discussed. And I'm just curious how united, it seems like, it seems like those three projects is really needed, and it looks like the state representative and the state senators are on board on trying to spearhead those three projects. I want to share a little bit about the district that I represent. I recently had a meeting with Senator Mazie Hirono, the Federal Highways, State DOT, and also our county Public Works. And one of the main concerns that I have really is going to be the reimbursement for funding regarding the construction that we, as a county, put up on railroad and Government Beach Road and now Chain of Craters. The reason why it's a concern of mine is because when we spoke to Federal Highways, reimbursement, when the governor sends his request for public assistance and individual assistance, when the president does the declaration, if he does deem public assistance and individual assistance, one of the things that, the trigger, is the closure for Highway 130. And any projects or improvements that were done before the closure of Highway 130 will not be reimbursed through that federal ways. So one of the things that, if you guys don't mind, is to help us as a Hawaii county for the reimbursement on those projects that were in place to help out Puna. The other thing I want to mention that Senator Ruderman mentioned is the fire ambulance, the apparatus that was fought for last year, I believe it was Makale and also for Puna. Whichever one gets an ambulance, I'm more than happy to support Makale or Puna. The Albizia issue, I put in thirty thousand for a matching fund with the Big Island Invasives Council, and we're going to match thirty thousand, thirty thousand for a position that will coordinate the efforts to manage Albizias. And I hope that this position will show some results for the task force, and Springer K is all involved in this, and we hope that it will be taken over by the state in the future or in the federal. And those are my issues, and at this time, I yield, thank you.
Okay, any, any representative or senators want to comment on that? Okay, if not, any other council members?
Yes, Margaret.
Okay, go ahead, Margaret, Ms. Willey.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate you all being here. I'm sorry that the state legislators from my area have not, there has not been one at either of these meetings here with the council, so, and I, so I am disappointed about that. I certainly think that on some of these issues, such as the air ambulance, or the well, or funding for the roads, if there's ways that council members who are in those districts could also do resolutions from the council and forward that to you, I'm not sure, you know, if that's helpful, I certainly think that we would be willing to do that. So I'm never sure, when we submit a resolution, here's something in our priorities, where it goes, or with all of the information coming in. I know that when we did one, and we spent many, a great deal of time working out what is a priority for each of our districts, none of those came to light. I had one that was the, sort of upgrading our bus service and doing a regional transit hub in Waimea, and I got calls from Sylvia Luke's office and that. But, you know, it's sort of, how can we keep things from getting lost in terms of what we're working on individually? I know in my district, looking at that area, how upgrading our whole bus service, which is really, in my district, not working well. And also just whether it's getting from, I think with the Puna situation, even more important upgrading our bus services, or say the fire ant issue, which is just, I'm going to be working on some contingency funds, just looking at my district, not just in the parks, but how do we address farmers...
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Willey. Can you, is there any questions that you want to ask our legislature?
I am following, I am asking them how they can listen to our district and our concerns, Justice Gregor, Councilmember Iligan did. Or, say, on the domestic violence issue, safe houses in Kau and North Hawaii, and also the TAT and the, you know, home rule issues. So, but one thing that you did bring up, Councilmember Loewen, and I just want to ask you about this...
It's Representative Loewen.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Is on the wastewater issue, which I did go to testify on, and trying to do, how can we do that step by step? I know the EPA is coming down about no new approvals, but I feel that there's sort of a blanket approach, black and white, and not, let's focus on the sensitive areas first, and not, and really get those done, and the differentiating existing systems, new systems, and subdivisions, having this sort of arbitrary, now we're going from fifty units to fifteen, where you have to provide a common system, which I find is often more potentially at risk than having individual systems. So I think this is a big issue, and I don't think it should just be looking at tax credits or tax things. We need to really, I think this is important, and it doesn't mean we are all concerned about protecting the reef, say even Puakoe, I mean, that's been my focus. But let's focus on where the highest impact is first, and not just do a blanket, okay, you just put this on. So I just want to raise that, you brought it up. It's certainly in my district a concern, we do have fifty thousand cesspools, existing ones here, and to what extent that you can really have an impact on being a balanced approach.
Well, I would point out too, that the proposed rules aren't coming from the legislature, and I share some of your concerns. I think, you know, having everyone in Mauna Kei areas be subject to the same conditions as people who are down by the ocean doesn't make sense. We can make more impact by, you know, focusing on where we can have the most difference. I think there is generally agreement to not continue permitting new cesspools. You know, tax, looking at a tax credit would be in cases where we do have to do the conversion, but the best solution is still to, for some of those areas, especially down near the ocean, some in maybe Councilman Kanuha's district particularly, the best solution would be to not have these people convert from cesspool to septic system, but to put them on county sewer. So it's how can we get those projects moving? So I share some of your concerns, absolutely. The Department of Health rules aren't a done deal, I'm submitting, you know, my comments to them. That comment period's still open until the seventeenth, I believe, and we're just trying to see what we can do to ease the impact from the, you know, what powers we have at the state legislature.
Communications, just sort of, and the back and forth that Representative Nakashima mentioned, you know, getting more communications between us, whether it's through resolutions and how we can do that, and also with, with the federal, our federal legislators, I know I tried to work on something with Tulsi Gabbard on hospital reimbursement, which I really feel that we could be doing something on an administrative level, and that we could really, I tried to do petitions and like that, that we really need to work local, state, and federal in order to succeed on some of these things. So the more coordination you all can do both ways, not just where we're, what you all are sponsoring, but also looking at what we're trying to forward onto you would be appreciated. If you have any comment, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I think that the communication is key, and, you know, as you mentioned, you're working to, you know, we are a small state, and you're even smaller colony, so, you know, the importance of working together with the state and federal officials is equally important. And so, you know, I have tried to do that, you know, in my capacity, and I think that the more that we do that, the better, because if, you know, you start, if everybody is out there with the same message, then it has a, it has a much greater impact. I think that the resolutions are good for my colleagues in terms of, you know, being able to give me something to leverage, to leverage the argument. However, individually, I think that, you know, it's also important to have the direct communication, either between you and us, or even between our staff people, because I think our staff people keep us, keep us on top of things and looking good, and I think Sunshine has a direct line to Lori, who is my office manager, and vice versa. And so, you know, I think that, that kind of communication is equally important, just not only between us as individuals, but between our staff people, because, you know, for my part, they're the ones that tell me exactly where to go and what to do at all times. And so, you know, that's kind of key, and in terms of helping me remember the things that I need to get done, you know, that's also kind of important, and hopefully, yeah, I'm sure equal, to lesser extents probably in your own offices as well. So, you know, I think those kind of communications are important. I find the same thing with the congresspeople, that it's not necessarily important to have direct communication with a member, but, you know, the appropriate staff person who dogged the issue and actually kind of do the work, I think is key. And at the congressional level, it's even more so, because they have so many more issues, and they do have more staff. So, you know, I think that, you know, finding the appropriate staff person on their level to talk to and have a dialogue with is kind of equally important, because that's what's going to keep the project moving and the issue going at all of the different levels. And so, you know, I think that the communication is key, and sometimes finding the right person to communicate to is equally important.
Thank you. If there was any other of the legislators who wanted to comment, otherwise, you?
Chair Onishi, can I?
Okay, Ms. Poindexter, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mark, because what he said is, I'm sure your office gets bombarded by my office, and I just want to say thank you for allowing that communication to be open, and for us to be able to work on the projects, because our staff are, they're connecting. So the relationship is wonderful, and I just want to publicly say thank you.
Okay, any other council members?
Mr. Onishi? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Karen, Karen.
Okay, wait, hold on. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Yoff.
Okay, thank you. Kind of follow up on what Representative Nakashima just said. Of course, I'd like to thank all of the legislators for joining us this morning. I think this is an important discussion to continue to have so that we remain connected and our relationships grow. But I found that, I wanted to thank Representative Loewen's office and her personally, because they've always been very responsive to any questions that we have, the staff has been on it, like we get responses very fast, so that we can help support either initiatives that affect our district in Kona, or get clarity on issues that we're not so, you know, keen on. But I just want to say thank you as well, and urge all of our representatives and senators to keep in touch with the council, either at these formal committee meetings that we may have in the future, or, but even more importantly, just day-to-day, or weekly, or monthly, especially as the sessions start, so that we can react, you know, with, you know, timely. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Onishi.
Okay. Any other council members?
Yes?
Okay, Mr. Rudeman, Senator Rudeman.
Thank you, yes, member. A couple of things occurred to me in the discussion.
Mr. Onishi?
Hold on, Senator Rudeman is making comments.
Okay.
I did fail to...
I just wanted to point out that Councilmember Ford wanted to say something too, after Senator.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. I did fail to thank you, Councilmember Onishi, for initiating this process, and I'm really glad we're making it a regular thing, and as we go forward, I think we'll be able to make it more and more useful. A couple of things did occur to me, you know, the discussion about the cesspools, I also think that the Department of Health needs to be urged to roll back some of its aggressive attempts to convert cesspools. I've talked to them directly, especially regarding the Puna district, it's not the time to put extra burdens on us out here, I don't know how other people feel, but I do echo Representative Loewen's comments, that there are areas where it's much more crucial than others, especially near the ocean and near swim areas. One thing, perhaps I could use the councils, the counties' help on, I did get some CIP money last year for a feasibility study for a Puna regional library. There's a statewide effort to take libraries out of the schools and establish regional libraries that are more modern, and I did get money to begin studying it, but because of the lava threat, it's appropriate to look at other locations in addition to what I had had in mind. What I had had in mind was in Pahoa, adjacent to the county park, but now perhaps it's not the smartest place to put a new building, and I would love input from the county on other possible locations in the Puna district for a regional library. I also would, this is sort of a new development related to the lava flow, but I've been asked many times to consider supporting some sort of community college or a branch of UH Hilo on the other side of the flow, some sort of outreach education center, and perhaps the council could support that effort. I'm also, with regards to the roads, which is a major county expenditure, as Councilmember Iligan pointed out, I want to mention that they are long overdue in Puna. We don't know what's going to happen with these roads right now, but I hope that we can extend them, complete them. For example, if railroad remains, if we get spared and railroad remains a viable route, it should be extended all the way from Kapohua to Hilo, and Puna has needed an alternate route for a long time. The opposition to it comes mostly from one or two large landowners who should no longer be allowed to thwart the needs of twenty or thirty thousand people out there. So I hope we can extend and make permanent these alternate routes, at least as a pedestrian and bicycle and emergency route, if not a full-time road. And one other issue that I'm working on, will be proposing, it's not CIP-related, but while we're talking, I'd love to ask you all for help on it. I'm trying to address possible insurance, homeowners' insurance crises that are related to natural disasters. Right now, we're looking at Puna, but it could happen in any of our districts, and I want to find a way where insurance companies are compelled to be good players and be good actors, and not cancel somebody's insurance when a threat suddenly arises. And lastly, as many people are moving out of Puna and all the available, affordable housing is all gone, I wonder if the county can look at the possibility of making available some temporary housing, possibly taking over, converting some abandoned, currently abandoned buildings, if there's other options. I mean, this is a county problem, really, we're going to need more housing than we have, and with a state of emergency, perhaps some rules can be suspended, or perhaps we can think outside the box in terms of where some of this... or perhaps we can think outside the box in terms of where some of this temporary housing can come from. And that's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Ms. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Couple of issues. First of all, you're completely correct that we need to put sewers in where sewers are appropriate rather than force people to go on to septic. Because you can wind up going on to septic and then when the sewer goes in, you have to pay again to do that. Drew and I have shared a district and there are 16 areas in a critical wastewater disposal area and only one so far has been seored. And the other 15 or so are still in problem. We have a section on Elite Drive. The reason I'm giving this, this information is we need money. That's the whole point of my discussion. We have a one-mile section on Elite Drive between the Bishop Estate properties and the county sewer system where everybody's on, these are old houses, they're all down in the ocean and they're all on cesspool. And the problem is that you can do Plan A, which is put in a multimillion-dollar pumping station to pump the sewage uphill so then it can flow by gravity to the wastewater treatment plant. Or you can do the logical thing, which is cut a deal with Bishop Estate and the county puts in the sewer line and pays Bishop Estate to handle the sewer because their sewer plant, their treatment plant is downhill. No matter which way we go, we've got to have money. That is one of the, that is the most critical project that we have in the district that Drew and I have shared. And so, we need money. I can send you the list of the projects, but we really desperately need money. More for the sewer system than we do for forcing people to change out at this point in time, especially in a critical wastewater area, disposal area. That's number one. I like your idea of no more cesspools. I just, I don't care where they are, that needs to stop. The other thing I would like to see on solar, and this can only come from the state, is a tax credit for landlords of apartment units to put solar in for their tenants. They have zero intent, incentive to do this. And the reason they won't do it, of course, is it costs them money and they get nothing back except maybe raising the rent. So, I would like to see the state provide some kind of tax credit. And maybe, maybe not all at once, maybe it has to be spread over five years or something so we're not taking a massive hit all at once. But the poorest people, not all the time, but a lot of poor people have to rent because they can't afford to buy. And so, one of the biggest costs to the poorer families is the cost of electricity. It takes a huge bite out of the budget. So, if we can have some type of a tax credit targeting the rental units, the rental market, the apartments and things, I think that would be really helpful. I like your ideas.
Ms. Ford, excuse me. Would you want them to comment on your concerns as you go along?
No, I was going to wait and let them take care of all of it at the end.
Because then, I mean, they might, they might forget about what your first question was. So, as you go on, you can ask them if they have any comments. I think that would be better.
Would any of the state representatives and senator care to comment on the tax credits for solar?
Sure. I think, you know, I did introduce a bill for community solar, which would sort of address some of that where the actual occupants of those units would be able to invest in a solar energy project and see the return on their electric bill without having to install something on their roof because of this issue of how do we get renters? How do we deal with multifamily units or apartments where there's not enough roof space for everyone to invest? You know, we could look at some kind of tax credit. I think the solar tax credit issue has been, you know, dealt with repeatedly at the state legislature. I don't know how much will there is to go and change it again. And then the bigger issue is, you know, what if this apartment unit, for Kona, the bigger issue is what if this apartment or condo is in an area where the grid is saturated and they're not permitting any new systems to be grid tied? So, there's kind of all those things to consider, but certainly it's important. And we did pass a bill in 2013 that allowed, I think it was only for adjacent property, however, but it did allow landlords to charge their tenants for electricity produced by a solar unit so they could recoup some of the costs that way and not consider it wheeling, which is illegal. So, but no, it's, it's a good point. So, we're looking at it.
Thank you. Any other representatives or, yeah, representatives or senators wish to comment?
Yes, this is Representative Krieger. In regard to solar, I think we need, need to think about that more fully. And I appreciate what Representative Lowen said. I do think that going forward, because of the reluctance of Helco to allow expansion of solar, that we have to think about expanding our battery backup alternatives and allowing tax credits for battery backup for, for units. And that could help expand the solar, you know, the use of solar despite the opposition from Helco. Otherwise, it could be off the grid entirely. Other places allow battery backup along with a grid tie-in, but for most of the powers, it comes from batteries. So, I think tax credits for, for batteries and I agree with Councilman Ford that doing this for renters would be something we really should think about. Thank you for that.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ford.
Thank, thank you. The critical wastewater disposal areas that need to be seored. And that's 15 of the 16 projects. It happens to be now in Mr. Canua's district. We have any comments on that? We really need money. Right now, as you know, everybody knows, we're spending money, quite a bit of it, getting, getting ready for incoming hurricanes. But the critical wastewater area is a real impacting area on our oceans and our health. So, what, any, go ahead, Ms. Lowen.
Uh, no, I mean, I completely agree. And I think there, there's maybe some funds available at the state. I'm looking into it. And I think, you know, we should work together to identify those funds and get the money needed so that you guys can move forward.
Okay. What I can, I can, I do is, this is an old resolution I did years ago. I can, if I haven't already, I can give you a copy of it and get, perhaps you can get DEM to update the numbers and provide it to all the representatives and the senators. So, thank you very much.
Okay, any other council members?
Mr. Onishi?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Canua.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say mahalo to our Senator Rudeman, Representative Krieger, Representative Lowen, and Representative Nakashima for being here today. Really appreciate it, sitting with us and discussing all these important issues. Oh, that's Senator Rudeman? Is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Just a big mahalo nui. The things that Ms. Ford explained about our critical wastewater is extremely important, especially in my district, as many of you know. We are going forward with Lona Kona subdivision, which is also Hamburger Hill, that we have gotten federal funds for. So, going through, I think, community meetings that we're going to have, hopefully, everybody can support it. It does cost a lot of money and for an area that might be a little bit more low-income than the rest of our, the district is very taxing on them, but extremely necessary to convert to our sewer system. And hopefully, we can move forward with the rest of, I mean, my district or, I mean, pretty much the whole island. But these rules that Department of Health are trying to do on our, our community is going to be extremely taxing. So, that is something I'm very worried about. And hopefully, we can get the rest of the community behind saying, this is not good for our community. But the rules that they're proposing are not going to be good. So, looking forward to working with my representatives, Lowen and Krieger, to try to, whatever I can do to help the situation, I'm going to do my best. But the issues that Ms. Lowen, Representative Lowen brought up, palamanui courthouse, those are extremely important to our, to our community. Also important too is the Queen Kalomano Highway expansion. Hopefully, hopefully soon, that can get on its way. But did you have any, was there any update about that one? I haven't heard anything in the last several months about the Queen Kalomano Highway expansion. But if not, it's, it's all good. We're patient. But, Ms. Lowen, sorry. Your, your microphone.
Turn it off. Okay. It's, there has been some progress. I have to check my email because I always get my, my updates from Aaron Steen sooner than from DOT. He's very on it. So, I think it's like, they, they are fully moving forward and it's like pending acceptance of, you know, the, I have to look it up and get back to you. But it's still in the, at the federal level. So, you know, we continue to follow up and ask frequently and put pressure, but it's, there's not a lot more we can do besides that. But it is moving. I know, and I, and I hate, it's like at this point, it's been, everyone's been waiting so long. It's like we'll believe it when we see it. So, I'm hesitant to ever say anything.
Yeah.
But hopefully, we'll see it soon.
Thank you. I don't have any more. I mean, I, I look forward to working with each and every one of you and look forward to 2015 as a great year where we can push a lot of our projects and work more collaboratively with our state legislature and on this council. Hopefully, we can all work in cooperation and, and be great colleagues with each other. So, mahalo for, mahalo for you guys for, for being here. Thank you.
Chair Onishi, can I just chime in just one last time?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. With the, chiming in on the cesspool and the DHS, you know, with their requirements, I think they, they didn't fly over to the Big Island. Because when you look at what happened in Hamakua and all of the sugar plantation camps and, you know, we don't, there's inadequate square footage. So, they need to take that in mind. They need to make sure that when they make the rules and laws, that they come and look at how it affects all of the people of Hawaii, not just maybe a small certain area that they're concentrating on. The other point I'd like to make is Lani Kila housing. I pass by the St. Joseph's School area and I see so much housing that could be made available. And I think at that, one time Hawaii Housing Authority came in and with the county, they refurbished some of the units. But there's so much units there that, you know, we look at Puna and what was being said about needing affordable housing. This is opportunity. We have it. But we just need our federal, state, and county to now start working together. And I think we can get some money from HUD, don't you think so, Mike? But anyway, so I'd like for that to be in the back of our minds. So, Lani Kila housing, go check it out. That's an area that we need to start putting people into homes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Now, Lani Kila is up in Hamakua, right?
No.
It's in Hilo. And I heard just within the last couple of weeks that all that transitional housing that went from Kauai High down into Puna is sitting there vacant. No cess, of course, there's no cesspools, there's no septic, nothing's been done and they've got to have at least septic, a gang septic. But we would need some money to do the refurbishing of those because we may have a problem with people having to get out of Puna. And those houses are, I don't even know where they're physically located right now, but they've been sitting there, I think, since after Emily left the council. So, maybe Mr. Illegon knows about those houses? I don't know where they're going to move them, but... They're going to move them up to you? Oh.
Currently, I'm not aware of any progress regarding those houses.
I yield.
Okay, any other council members?
I have a quick additional comment if all those who-
A comment to one of the legislators?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the underlying themes of everything we've all said is that we need more money. You know, we all have important projects and the state, whether it's the hospital there, down to the cesspool issues, our roads, the ambulance. And we need to figure out ways that we can bring in more streams of income without just hitting everybody with more taxes. I mean, and sometimes I find that just sort of really brainstorming those issues is, it's always how do we tighten our belt? How do we tighten our belt again, you know? And, or raise the GT and things that sort of stifle our economy. And, you know, I just would like to have more of that discussion, whether it's, I mean, I brought up a bill that wasn't necessarily well-received. Maybe we should do, promote, have some high stakes bingo or lottery where the ticket you buy gets, you get to designate what fund, whether it's, you know, goes to. You know, what other ways we can really think to bring in additional money? I also think we're very weak on grants, you know, on a county and state level. I feel our county could use that, you know, whether it's hire massive grant writers and give them a percentage. But anyway, I just, I don't think, we all see these things as needs and it's only, we've got only a small, a pie to divvy it up without imposing on the same people that are in need. So, just in terms of communication, you know, how can we look at these issues and, and really, you know, think out of the box? What can we do in the big picture, whether the money comes directly to the county or the state, in order to implement all the programs that are so essential? So, thank you.
Any comments from the legislature on, I suppose, any question from Ms. Willie? Go ahead, Ms. Senator Rudeman.
Yeah, Mr. Chair Onishi?
Okay, go ahead, Representative Nakashima.
Uh, thank you. You know, I, I think that, you know, I've been, I've been sitting and listening to all the comments and concerns from the, from the members of the council. I think I share all of them. You know, I think, I did want to clarify a little bit that, you know, the, the Department of Health rules is coming out, but it's, it's in response to the EPA's mandate that we all get off of cesspools. And this, when Holoka became seored, I think, four years ago now, you know, it, it keeps it in front of, of my mind, especially since, you know, we live downhill. So, I, I have, I had to put in a pump and I constantly am pumping my stuff up to, up to Momane Street in Holoka. And that was a result of, I think there was a federal stimulus grant that came out at the time that, that allowed Holoka and the colony to move that forward. I think, you know, I think as I go back to the, creating the state interest, the hospital and the schools were the state interest because the state looked at, would be looking at huge fines from EPA for not getting those large gang sewers offline. And so, you know, I think there was, there was a complete state interest there. So, in all of the projects, if you can find a state interest in that, then that makes it easier for us to find state funds to go, go at this. Also, I think that, again, the members of Congress, I think, are kind of key in bringing them into that discussion with regard to the sewage systems because they are the ones that pull the federal purse strings. And that's where, you know, we are getting a lot of our money for the wastewater needs in our communities. And because, you know, our communities are so small, you know, there's no way that we can afford the infrastructure necessary to, to do it. You know, we are the very large rural area. So, you know, we just don't have the population to really afford to pay for that. So, that's why, you know, the assistance from the state as well as the feds are, are really- So that's why, you know, the assistance from the state, as well as the feds, are really necessary. So I think working together on that issue, and maybe finding a way to bring us all together specifically on that issue, might be kind of key, you know, maybe even in the next couple of weeks, to see if we can't at least begin that discussion, as we all head into the new legislature and the new congressional session, that, you know, we have that discussion and kind of bring it to the forefront. You know, everybody is, you know, slowly is watching the events transpire in Puna, but I think if we look at the long-term thing, that, you know, that's, that's something that we can really work on now and move forward on. The other thing that was discussed was the concern on energy. And I think that the solar is a very good alternative. However, as the recent filing by Helco kind of pointed out, or HEI actually, you know, right now with the net metering, rooftop solar isn't doing anybody any favors, except for those that actually have the solar on their roofs. You know, they, the meter goes forward and backward, and so the price that we pay for the solar coming off of somebody's roof is the same price that they buy their energy fund. So if it, if the cost is 39 cents, we, the consumer, are paying 39 cents for that solar coming off of somebody's roof. And they, you know, at the end of the day, because they made the investment, their bill does go down, but for the greater community, you know, there is, there is no savings. And there is a transition to a greater percentage of renewable energy, but, you know, the cost still remains fixed. And so until we kind of try and address those type of issues, we are not going to see any lowering of the cost of electricity across the board. And so, you know, we need to look at other, other means of, one, bringing more solar on, but also bringing it on in such a way that, you know, it benefits the greater community and not just those that are able to invest in the solar. Thank you.
Okay, Senator Rutterman?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Willie brought up the subject of money, and I want to make a couple of To me, the ways that, that we could comfortably increase more money to the county are to continue to fight for more of the T A T tax, because I think that's the issue that is alive and has potential. That's something that the county could do, which I've mentioned before. We could put in a progressive increase in property tax that affects only the most expensive homes and properties. It could be tied to only second homes. It could be tied to homes that are more than twice the median price in that area, not just homes, but other buildings. But that's a way, without putting any further burden on the poorest people, that we can raise more money, and it's, it seems like, you know, people who can afford it would be paying their fair share. The idea of lotteries and things like that, I don't know about bingo, but as far as lotteries and other kinds of gambling things, from my research, states that have gone into lotteries, let's say the lottery is dedicated to education, and then that's the way we all agree to do it. What happens a couple of years down the line is the education budget just gets cut by the same amount, whatever the lottery is bringing in. You end up with the same amount of money, but now you have gambling in the state. I just have this one idea regarding the discussion of electricity prices, that has occurred to me, that maybe the county could have a role in it. You know, one of the problems with more and more solar is how to handle the fluctuations and how to handle energy storage. Right now on Kauai, I'm sorry, on, on, in Parker Ranch area, they're looking at a pumped hydro storage system, where they can, what pumped hydro is, is you pump water in the daytime, then you let it go back downhill and recapture the energy when you need it. In discussions with Helco about this, I was told that, oh, it's just too expensive, pumped hydro. But actually, it's a fairly low-tech and reliable method, and it's being looked at. And even on Kauai, they just put online the, the largest ever utility-scale solar farm up there, which is going to bring down their electricity costs. And I have noted for a long time that there are no utility-scale solar projects on this island, which is curious to me, because on the other islands, there's an average of 12, either planned or already in existence, and here on this island, it's zero. So perhaps the county could have a role in this, in the sense that we pump water anyway, and maybe if we could have some sort of reservoir system where we can pump water uphill during the day, have it flow downhill to Kona or wherever needed during the night. If we could combine the idea of pumped storage with our water pumping needs anyway, then it becomes a very affordable thing, and it opens up all kinds of opportunities for Helco to do much more with solar power. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other legislatures? Do you folks want to comment?
Yes, sir. This is Mrs. Ford.
No. Legislatures?
Well, that's us two.
No, but I mean, I'm talking to like the, Representative Krieger or Representative Lowen?
I'll just make a quick comment about-
Okay, sure, go ahead.
-electricity, since we're getting into the energy discussion. Sorry, Mark. But the, with the net energy metering, the way that it's structured, it only zeros out your bill. The additional energy that's produced is free to the utility. And I really strongly feel that this idea that solar customers-